Call to order, I now call the East Lime Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of November 21st, 2024 to order at 7:30 PM. Say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for the roll call, Ann Thurlo is absent. Mr. Peck?
Yep.
Ms. Markovitz?
Here.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Lyska? Ms. Siskel? And Ms. Yuhas? Roseanne Hardy, our ex officio, is not here. Anybody taking her place?
I don't think so.
Okay. Mr. Mulholland, you're here.
Here.
Ms. LaRocco's here. Ms. Siskel and Ms. Yuhas, could you please be seated? Okay, for the public hearing tonight, the East Lime Zoning Commission proposal to amend, amend text amendments to Sections 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 12 of the East Lime zoning regulations to be complied with the state PA 23-132. No, no, 142.
I sure can. Memo to East Lime Zoning Commission from William Mulholland, zoning official, regarding zoning commission text amendments for compliance with PA 23-142, Sections 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 12, dated November 20th, 2024. As the commission is aware, the town attorney, Timothy...
Bleesdale.
I'm gonna... I've gotta... I've gotta secure your name, I'm sorry. Has recommended several zoning text amendments to update the zoning regulations to ensure compliance with Public Act 23-142. Attorney Bleesdale submitted a letter on October 10th, 2024, describing in detail the specific changes proposed. In addition, in your packets, you will find a detailed amendment proposal noting the proposed language and sections to be adopted. Because the proposal is viewed as a housekeeping matter for the board and is mandated by the state, its adoption will ensure regulations are in keeping with the state law. The attorney is here this evening and will answer your questions.
Good evening.
Excuse me, I believe we have a couple more things to read before we get started.
Yeah, we have a couple more here. November 20th, 2024, Ann Thurlo, Chairman, East Lime Zoning Commission, Town of East Lime, reapplication of town attorney, proposed text amendment to amend Sections 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 12 of the East Lime zoning regulations to comply with state PA 23-142. Chairman Thurlo, the East Lime Planning Commission at its meeting of November the 12th, 2024, unanimously found the above referenced text amendment consistent with the 2020 East Lime Plan of Conservation and Development in terms of economic development as long as issues involving safety are addressed. If you have any further questions regarding this letter or the P O C D, please do not hesitate to contact the Director of Planning, Gary Geishel. Sincerely, Kurt Scott, Secretary, Planning Commission. And from the Southeast Connecticut Council of Governors, of governments, William Mulholland, dated October 23rd, 2024, William Mulholland, zoning official, Town of East Lime, zoning department, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut. Dear Mr. Mulholland, in response to the application for regulation amendments for the Town of East Lime, the application was received on 10/21/24. The application was referred to this agency pursuant to Section 8-3 of the Connecticut General Statutes. The proposed amendment would amend several sections of the town zoning regulations to comply with Connecticut PA 23-142 relating to the family and group home childcare homes. Based on a review of the material provided, I have determined that the proposed text, the proposed amendment is not likely to have a negative intermunicipal impact. If you have any questions, please contact me, Nicole Hagerty, Senior Regional Planner.
I don't think we got a letter from Deep. So we have no letter from Deep. So, Madam Chair, I think Mr. Bleesdale is up.
Welcome, Mr. Bleesdale.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tim Bleesdale. I'm from the Town Attorney's Office, Waller, Smith &amp; Palmer. That was a very good introduction. I guess I have very little to add to that summary, but essentially, the reason we're here tonight, and this, a similar process is playing out in towns in various ways across Connecticut, but the, the state changed the state zoning laws last year with, with Public Act 23-142. And really what matters here is what they did is they, they put in a requirement that says zoning regulations of a town can't, must permit certain types of in residence or in home childcare centers that are licensed by the state under their regulations to be, to be a permitted use in any zone that allows a residential use. And so that's the, the long list of amendments that, that you read just a short while ago. I have them typed out on, I believe this is page two and three of the application packet, and I think it might make sense just to flip to that, that second page there where I have the definition set out, because I can kind of explain pretty quickly, I think, how this all works to bring us into compliance with the state law. So you're looking for this page here.
Okay, got it.
Okay. So, the amendments start by adding into our zoning regulations a definition of the family childcare home and the group childcare home, and both of these are tied into that state licensing system that is set up through the statute. The reason we have to add these is that right now, our regulations don't address these childcare homes, or childcare centers, one way or another. Our regulations are silent on them. And usually in a situation like that, what would happen in Bill's office is if somebody came in and applied for a use that state law said we had to allow in a zone in East Lime, but our regulations didn't say anything about it, well, Bill would apply the state law. And anybody, and I don't think there has been any applications for this in the past year since this law was passed, but if someone had come in, that's what Bill would do, because he knows how to, to apply the state law. But the, the quirk of this statute is we actually have to make our regulations say it, which is a little bit more than the state necessarily, usually requires. So, we're putting this in here to define these, these two uses, these in-home childcare centers, in, in a way that matches up with the statute, and then simply what the rest of it does is we drop them in as permitted uses into any zone that is allowing a residential use. The one oddball on this list is on the next page, and that is for the amendment to Section 12. So, Section 12 currently doesn't have any permitted uses, they're all special permit uses, and there's another wrinkle in the statute here, because the statute says we're not allowed to require special permits for these types of childcare centers. It's a little tricky, because Section 12 technically allows residential uses, but only by special permit. And so, to, to comply with the statute, what we're doing is, is creating a new permitted uses section, and so the only thing that's going to be listed as an as of right permitted use will be these two types of in-home childcare centers. But you won't be able to, you still won't be able to open one of these in, in that zone without it being inside a residence. So, the person still has to have that special permit for the residential use before they can have, come in and ask Bill for the, the permit for one of these childcare centers in that zone.
I'm gonna interrupt, I apologize. That's the SU District, Section 12, which is a floating zone that can land in a lot of different places if you approve a zone change for it. So that's why it's such an anomaly.
Yeah, and it really is unusual. The rest of it is fairly straightforward, you know, we're just defining what these uses are in accordance with the statute, and then adding them into each section as a permitted So, one of the things that state law requires of this commission when it's amending the zoning regulations is to make a finding that the proposed amendments are consistent with your plan of conservation and development. Earlier tonight, just a short while ago, we, we heard a reading of the letter from the Planning Department that was submitted yesterday, in the Plan, or the Planning Commission, excuse me, and they made a finding and recommended to you that it is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. And I did, the one comment I wanted to add on to this is that they have this caveat in their letter that says it's consistent as long as issues involving safety are addressed. The letter doesn't specify what safety issues they were concerned about, but I think the, the way that this commission should look at it is, these childcare centers are licensed by the state of Connecticut, they're regulated by the state of Connecticut, there's a whole regulatory scheme that applies to how these places operate and, you know, the standards they need to meet. So, so there is, there is a framework in place that addresses, you know, some of the safety concerns, whatever they may have been, and how these things are operating. But then in addition to that, you know, on an individual application by application basis, Bill's going to be looking at for safety issues along the way, as, as these, these applications come in, to the extent that they do.
I also note that there will be building code, safety regulations built in, as well as health code, et cetera, and the state regulations.
That's, that's exactly right. So, so there's, there's a lot of safety mechanisms already built into the laws that are applicable here anyway. So, without knowing exactly what they were referring to as safety issues, I think based on what we know, we should feel confident that we're not creating, you know, a, a, by default unsafe situation simply by allowing these uses in the zone, in these zones, with these amendments, if that makes sense. And one of the reasons why it's important for us to do this is we have to certify to the state on an annual basis that we have made these changes to our regulations, and there's a deadline coming up for that in December. And, and as of right now, the state is simply collecting information about which, which towns are compliant and which ones aren't. We don't know what they're going to do with that information in the future. You know, as I said, the, the state law already applies here, this is really just a housekeeping matter to make our regulations match up with the statutes, but we don't want to find ourselves in a position where another zoning reform comes out, you know, from the next section, session of the legislature, and suddenly there is some kind of penalty based on this data that they're collecting that we're, we're non-compliant. So, if the commission is interested in that information, there's, in the packet, I did include an example of how the state is collecting and displaying that information to the public right now. And last year, what we did is we, we had the first selectman sign an affidavit that said essentially that we apply the state law as it's written, but our regulations don't exactly mirror what the statutes say, but we're still gonna apply the state law, and in the meantime, we'd make this application to bring the regulations into compliance. And so, so that's what we're here for tonight, and, you know, as a representative of the Town Attorney's Office, I can tell you that it is the recommendation of our office that this commission grant the application as well. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
What is there that we have, or maybe the state has, to prevent, for example, somebody in a residential neighborhood building a 5,000 square foot daycare center?
So, it would have to be, that's a good question. So, the residences in which these daycare centers can go, it, it has to be the type of residential property that's allowed under your regulations already. So, if the regulations don't allow, and, and it has to be an in-home daycare center as well.
So, home occupation.
Right, right. So, it's, 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 the, the chances of that, I think, are somewhat limited, as long as the regulations don't allow, you know, certain, sorry.
So, good question. Would my home occupation zoning regulations apply if the state has said this is what the regulation is? I don't believe I can apply the home occupation regulation, can I?
Well, no. So, it has to be, first of all, it has to be in a residence. So, so I guess the, the, the quick answer is no, because the, in order to have one of these centers, you have to get the state of Connecticut to come in and say that you have sufficient facilities, that you meet all the licensing requirements and all the other, you know, benchmarks in their, in their regulations, but the, the size of the daycare center is going to be limited by, you know, the size of residences that, that are permissible under your regulations in a particular zone.
So, let's say somebody with three acres go by our regulations, the size of a house can be pretty, good size.
10,000.
And so they add on a 3,000 square foot, one-story daycare center.
Mm-hmm.
That, it's the only thing I'm worried about.
Yeah, I, I think, I guess I don't know the, the answer to that question right off the top of my head, but I, I think where the answer would lie is in the types of licenses that apply to different sizes and types of daycare centers. So even though someone here would be kind of finding a back door to create, you know, a very large daycare center, you know, nominally attached to their house, you know, it's an extra wing or something, but I, I suspect that that would, that would probably move, if they're exceeding a certain size of, you know, the, the number of children they're caring for, that that would move them into a higher level of regulation with the state.
And it may, it may require sprinklers, I'm not, I don't know the building code well, but that may not be a respect, because there's money to be made in daycare.
And let me see, I, I do have, let's see if I can...
I'm just envisioning something like that, and the, the size of the playground has to be related to the size of the, the number of kids, and so you got 50 kids out playing, and maybe the neighbors might not like it.
One of the questions would be if it's a single-family home, Tim, I know you're half-listening, would that be considered, the state's essentially saying it's an accessory to a single-family home, but it's a commercial entity, but the state has spoken. Norm, to Norm's point, you would have a playground, most likely.
You have to.
If the kids need, you have to, if the kids need to get outside. The state licensing, I think, the health department's involved to some degree, I don't know the exact chain of who's involved, but the state licenses these things, they inspect these things. There's actually one right up the street from the town hall. It hasn't been problematic, but theoretically, that's an interesting question.
I see here that you have definitions. If you could, tell us the difference between a, a family childcare home and a group childcare home.
So, the difference is in the type of license that they carry from the state of Connecticut. So, when you look at section, I'm sorry, I was looking through the statute here, let me flip back here. So, so Chapter 368A of the General Statutes contains a, a number of different statutes in there, it's, it's not just one statute, and I do have at least one of them in here. Let's see, I think I have both of them in your packet. And I, that, that's kind of why I want to show you, is just to kind of give you an idea of like, the, the difference between the two is, is a fairly dense, dense...
Oh, of course.
...answer, but let me just, let's see. Yeah, so, let's see. So in your packet, there is, it's statute 19A-87B is the first one that I have there, and the second one is 19A-80. And so, so you can see here that there's, the, the state has its own licensing, definitions for these things, and there's regulations that they have on top of this as well. These are not, I guess I, I'm not able to give you, you know, a very specific explanation of what these would look like, but they're not going to be something like a balustrini size, something in town you might be familiar with. These, these are going to be, you know, people in their homes providing care to, you know, relatively small groups, I think.
I just wondered if the difference were someone taking care of only family members or someone taking care of members outside of their household or family unit?
That may, that may be a component of that.
But there, there is a, I'm pretty sure from my days of needing childcare, that you were restricted to how many children you could actually have per adult in the home, really?
Yes.
So that would kind of tend to limit the size of what you could have.
And I, that was, I guess, in a right about way, what I was trying to say when I was responding to Mr. Peck, was that there's, there's, when you have different numbers of children, there's different licenses that apply.
Yeah.
So, so the licensing scheme that you're looking at for something like balustrines is different than what you'd be looking at here. And, and based on that, and the fact that it's required to be in a residence, you know, is gonna set it aside from that. And, and I guess I, I'm, I have to apologize that I can't explain it in, in more detail in terms of what the state regulations are there. I, I guess I sort of was approaching it from the, from the, the perspective that that is, you know, for the state to worry about, you know, how they regulate that and license it, and they could change those, that, you know, whatever their regulations are now, they could change those in the future, but we're required to allow them.
Nonetheless, the state's passed this, so it's a mandate.
Right, right.
So we really don't have a choice.
And I would imagine 10 acres is a lot of space, if you have to have a big playground anyway, that your neighbors and passerby's may not even notice you have 10 acres, as was the example, I believe.
And, you know, the state, state law has been trending more and more towards a much more permissive, loose kind of approach to zoning, and I think this is an example of that, you know?
And I think there's a need for childcare, having children that need care, I think it's very hard to find care, that I think it's a nice regulation to be putting, pushing forward for families. I would tend to agree.
That's an excellent point. I mean, with the change in the, the cutoff age for kindergarten, a lot of families have found themselves sort of in the lurch, looking for an extra year of childcare before they can get into, you know, the town's kindergarten program.
Since we are, one of our charges is to protect property values, and again, the next door neighbor to a 5,000 square foot daycare center, six months after they bought the house, might have a problem. So I would like to, before we make a decision here, I want to know how we can control this. I know some towns have regulations that say in-house daycare centers, maximum number of children in a residential zone, and in a commercial zone, the number is 50 or 200 or whatever. I want to know how we can control this, because that is our job.
So I, I think...
If you could come back, maybe we can continue this public hearing and...
Well, I, I think I can answer that question right now. So, the, the maximum number of children that these businesses will be able to take care of within the home will be something that's determined by the state. So, I, I don't think it's within this committee's, or commission's jurisdiction to, to set a capacity on that. What, things that would be within your jurisdiction would be to place limits on the size of the buildings that could go into the zone, give the size of the residence. That, that's where you have the ability to, to, to prevent that 5,000 square foot, you know, daycare center being built in, in the middle of your neighborhood. But the, the, in terms of the capacity, and I, and I am familiar with the regulations, the sort of regulations that you're talking about, and I think those are probably older ones that predate this amendment last year, because what we're required now to do is permit what the state allows. So we're, we're sort of stuck with what they set as their capacities.
Similar to the affordable housing statute?
In what way?
In that it's required by the state.
Oh, yes, yes, exactly. Right, right.
I would like to know the state statutes that help us with this issue.
Okay.
And number two, I'd like to know how we can further, if need be, tweak the, the control.
Okay. And when you say the control...
This is simple, just very carte blanche, you know, you're gonna do this, I, I don't buy it.
Okay. Well, it, it is the state of the law. Even if, even if this commission doesn't amend the regulations, this is still the law that would apply, and so if, if somebody came in tomorrow and asked for one of these permits, Bill would have to grant it, even though it's not in our regulations. So, they're here now, the, the, the differ, what, what we're doing here is meeting that requirement that makes our regulations match up with the statute, so that we'll be in compliance and can report that to the state.
Can we be more restrictive, which I don't think we can?
No, we cannot. If the state says that we have to allow something, we can't be more restrictive, which is why I'm saying that I, I, you can't put a, a capacity of the number of kids that could be in one of these care centers, because that, that's, that's exclusively within the state's jurisdiction, because they have the, the, the overriding regulation screen, scheme for these childcare centers.
I'd like to, I'd like to continue, if we agree here, to find out more information. I don't think it's right that the state should take over zoning for towns. I know they're sneaking up on us and, and trying to do this in several different ways. I'd like to know how, what controls they already have, and what we can do within the law.
Nancy, you ready for a motion to close the public hearing?
I, I just...
I think, I think we need to continue it.
I think we need to continue it.
If you agree with what I'm...
I don't agree, and I don't, Norm, I think, I think it's a fool's errand, we have to pass this thing one way or another. Pushing it off for another, another two weeks is gonna accomplish nothing.
Yeah, I tend to agree with my...
I, I take your point, but I see no, I see no reason to do it.
Okay, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Do your second. Everyone?
Comment?
Comment?
I'm only trying to get educated. If we pass this thing, we're gonna fall asleep, and we won't know the answer to these questions. We should know if we can do anything, and we should know what the state is doing in this regard. I don't think we should just lay down.
It's already kind of a done deal, isn't it? I mean, we have to follow the regulation anyway, it sounds like.
Are you...
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like we have, as, as it is right this moment, we don't have a choice, we have to go along with that.
Yes. So effectively, what denying the application does is, we still have to allow these centers, because the state law says we do, even though it's not in the regulations. So, so effectively, what we'll be doing is having the first selectman file that affidavit that he's required to by year end, stating that an application was made and the commission denied it, and the explanation that he would have to give is that, you know, as the first selectman, he doesn't have authority over what this commission does, and he can't simply dictate to you to say, change the regulations the way the statute says, but that would be what, the position that we, the town would be in, is we'd have to report that to the state. But otherwise, it doesn't change whether these daycare centers can go into these neighborhoods.
These are, if this is passed, these uses do not have to go through a public hearing process.
That is correct. We are not allowed by state law to require a public hearing for them.
May I say your firm?
Right, exactly. We're not allowed to, we're not allowed to require a special permit, which is what would trigger that, that public hearing.
Wish the public was here now.
We have public, it's just not the public we want.
We have a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes, one, two, three, four, five, to one. Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
So you closed the public hearing, you have not made a decision.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, application of Michael Lamparsky for BAM Fitness South DBA Coastline Fitness for a special permit for a health club for property located at 15 Industrial Park Road, Assessor Map 26.1 Lot 2.
Madam Chairman, I need to recuse myself.
Oh. Wait, uh. We still have one.
No, I'm fine.
This, this letter right here.
The legal ad which runs, they posted a sign. So that's the housekeeping, and I have a memo that Denise is going to read.
Memo to East Line Zoning Commission from William M. Holland, zoning official, regarding special permit application, fitness club, 15 Industrial Park Road, date November 20th, 2024. The applicant, Michael Lamparsky, is applying for a special permit to establish and operate a fitness club at 15 Industrial Park Road. Mr. Lamparsky and his business partner, Brian Vanderveen, own two existing fitness clubs which operate under the moniker Postal Fitness Club. One club is located in Clinton, the other is, is in Old Saybrook. The East Line location will be their third location. The site is located behind the industri, in the industrial park, excuse me, behind the Stop &amp; Shop Grocery Store on Flanders Road. It has been occupied in the past as Bob's Discount Furniture Store, and most recently by a firearms training facility, which is no longer in business. The club will be a full-service health club, providing such service amenities as group exercise classes, personal training, a wellness center, boxing, free weights, cardio treadmill, and other exercise equipment. The facility will have showers and a sauna. In the future, pickleball courts may also be developed. It is anticipated that the facility will operate from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM on weekdays, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturdays, and from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Sundays. The club will employ up to 25 full and part-time employees. An analysis of the zoning regulations finds the use is permitted in the light industrial zones under Section 11.2.4, which allows health clubs, health spas, and gymnasiums, et cetera, subject to the special permit regulations in Section 25, and the additional standards in Section 25.5 table of minimum controls. The use is also subject to Section 24 Site Plan and to Section 22 Parking. Our view of the project finds the subject building is an existing industrial-type building of approximately 35,000 square feet in area. The lot is 258,200 square feet in area, or six acres. There are 112 parking spaces on-site. The building is connected to municipal water and sewer. I note that the industrial park directly intersects Flanders Road, which is a signaled intersection. Because the site is a developed site, it is compliant with all applicable Site Plan regulations with one exception. As the commission may recall, Section 24.6C requires the installation of a sidewalk along the lot frontage abutting Flanders Road. This rule would require the installation-
I'm going to check Industrial Park Road, as we type out-
Oh, yes, okay.
By the zoning act.
Along the lot frontage abutting Industrial Park Road. This rule would require the installation of approximately 363 linear feet of sidewalk. Given that the applicant is a tenant and not the property owner, they are requesting an exception or a waiver to this requirement as provided for under Section 24.7. Question is whether the granting of an exception would be in keeping with the waiver requirements in Section 24 dot 6C, which states in part, sidewalks may be waived by the commission upon finding that sidewalks at the proposed location are not necessary or desirable for pedestrian safety and circulation. In conclusion, is my view that the use in sight are compliant with the applicable zoning regulations with the exception of the sidewalk. The board should carefully evaluate the application, and in particular, the waiver request.
Madam Chair, the applicant is here, and give a brief presentation.
Make sure you give him the one.
Sorry about that.
My name is Brian Vanderveen. This is my partner, Michael Lamparsky. Michael and I have been in the fitness industry for over 30 years each. We own two health clubs, as you know. It's Coastline Fitness Clubs, not Coastal, but originally, yeah, it's Coastline Fitness Clubs. One is in Clinton, and another one in Old Saybrook. Our goal is to provide East Line Nyana community with a full-service health club. Coastline Fitness offers many amenities, including group exercise classes, 12-piece circuit, wellness center, locker room, shower, saunas, personal training, small group training, boxing, free weights, and cardio. We are looking at the possibility of putting indoor pickleball courts. One reason for the handouts is we want to kind of show you some of the pictures of our clubs that we have now, the programs we offer, and, you know, some, you know, a lot of things that we organize for our groups, for, for both men and women. Our health club, clubs are great, are known for great customer service and very clean facility. We have a cleaning company that comes out seven days a week. Our memberships have discounts for students, military, police, seniors, and for the family as well. Michael's going to hand out another brochure of, what's that, of the property and the lights, and also the bridge as well.
This is a lot of copies. Thank you.
Some of these photos will show that the site is up to, up to zoning code, because it's obviously the previous use, it has existing lighting, and landscaping, et cetera.
Upon research, we discovered there's a request for, obviously, the, putting sidewalks. We have noticed the bridge is very small, and very large vehicles coming through. We feel this could be a hazard to people, for people to cross over. We do feel at some point, if the bridge was expanded, then at that point, it would be ideal to expand the sidewalk as well. Due to the fact we are not the owners of the building, we are leasing the facility, we are hoping that you waive the requirement for us to provide a sidewalk. As stated, our hours of operations will be 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Friday, Saturday 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Sundays 8:00 to 4:00 PM. Fitness is our passion, and Coastline Fitness helps the community with donations, special events throughout the year. We will probably bring in about 25 to 30 jobs to the area, which is good for, for obviously the growth, and obviously, we hope all of you support a healthy and new business coming into the area. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I just want to make one comment. There's the one picture showing the bridge with the tractor trail on it. There is no sidewalk on that bridge.
Right.
So if they install a sidewalk, we're now facilitating people towards that bridge. Up to you what you think is, whether it's a good idea or not, your regulations allow you to waiver or not. So I just wanted to point that photo out, because I, I don't know when the town's planning on replacing the bridge. It needs to be replaced, because it's so narrow, and obviously, we all know Industrial Park Road is, is sort of become a connected, it goes by the school, it's really a driveway, but it's become a de facto town road, and all of us use it, particularly when Flanders Road is backed up. So food for thought. Thank you.
Yeah, I kind of see a safety issue in putting a sidewalk in there.
Yeah, I agree. I would have no trouble waiving the sidewalk requirement.
Well, when the baseball, we, we allow the baseball, kids, kids to go from the middle school to this baseball, to, to play baseball place next to Hunter Olympic, a little farther up the road. And we didn't require sidewalks for that.
Yeah, that's quite-
So I think it would be a lousy place for a sidewalk, usually.
Yeah, I agree.
Any more discussion?
Well, we're still in public hearing. I don't think there's anybody here who has anything to say.
If there are no questions by the commission, if further questions, Madam Chair, you want to ask for input from the public, even though we have limited public, like none.
Allow public.
But to build my record, we should ask the question.
Is there any further discussion to be had?
No.
This is our chance to ask these gentlemen anything you can think of.
They're just using the existing building, no additions.
No.
Yeah, I mean, this, this seems pretty, pretty straightforward, thank you.
Seems like a no-brainer to me.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, you were going to ask if there's anybody for or against in the public, just to keep my record straight?
Oh, is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak either for, against, or neutrally? Not hearing any?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Moves to close the public hearing.
I second it.
Anyone, everyone vote please?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Disposition of minutes is next. Okay. Do you have?
Madam, Madam Chair, we need to open the regular meeting. Oh, we just closed the public hearing, you're at item number four in your notes.
Okay, so we now need, I'm too far. Okay, so now we move on to regular meeting. Okay. For A, East Line Zoning Commission Proposal to Amend Sections 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 12 of the East Line zoning regulations to comply with State PA 23-142. Commission, do we have discussion?
I mean, Mr. Peck is right. I mean, these things cause us to lose a, a degree of control, but we, I mean, that's simply going to happen.
We've already lost it.
We've already lost it. I mean, all our power of zoning comes from the state. They can take it back and change it, you know, on a whim. And, and the state legislature seems to be moving that way. I mean, we can put this off for a meeting, but I don't see any point in doing that.
No. I agree.
I make a motion to approve text amendments to Sections 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 12 of the East Line zoning regulations to comply with State PA 23-142.
I second. Everyone agree? Agree, agree. Five, zero, zero. Motion passes.
Would you put me down for a, a post, please?
I mean, you're opposed? Okay.
Five, one.
Five, one, okay, yeah. Sorry, Norm. Moving on to number B, affordable housing.
Madam Chair, published next Thursday, effective on Friday. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
The legal ad, I will publish next Thursday, effective on Friday.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
It's all right with everyone, I'd like to afford all the housing section of this to be tabled for the next meeting? Is everybody okay with that?
Thank you, Tim.
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay. Item C, application of Michael Lamparsky for BAM Fitness South DBA Coastline Fitness for a special permit for a health club for property located at 15 Industrial Park Road, Assessor Map 26.1 Lot 2. Anyone more discussion?
I hate to see that building sitting empty. I think it would be great to have a fitness center in there.
Yeah, I agree. I can't think of any reason to.
I agree so too. And I think I, I would add that the sidewalk waiver is appropriate as well.
Absolutely. Do you want to approve the motion?
I think there's a motion on my memo, a suggested motion for and against.
And there it is.
I don't think there is.
Here it is, here it is, right here. Application of Michael, motion to approve application of Michael Lamparsky for BAM Fitness South, doing business as Coastline Fitness, for a special permit for a health club property located at 15 Industrial Park, Assessor's Map 26 dash point one, Lot 2, with the following, noting the following, a granted request for an exception to Section 24 dot 6 dash C, sidewalks eliminating the requirement to build a sidewalk along the street frontage.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Will publish next Thursday, effective on Friday.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Next, disposition of minutes. We need approval of a minutes of the 11/7/2024 regular meeting. Any discussion?
They looked great to me.
Of course. Anyone else?
Move to accept as presented.
Thank you.
Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Denise seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Old business, we have none. Subcommittee reports. Subcommittee text amendment mixed-use CA zone.
Still working, thank you.
Okay, the R U 8040 redistricting table at this time, still working on it. New business. I have too many pages here. Any business on the floor, if any, by majority vote of the commission? Correspondents, none? Nothing, okay. Text, proposed text amendment for political signs from 90 days to 30 days.
Madam Chair, I was asked by the chair to prepare something. I prepared a, a memo, I don't have in your package, but propose to go from 90 to 60 days, so I thought we'd table that until the next meeting, when the chair shall return.
Okay, so tabled. Public delegations is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission regarding zoning, land use items that are not on the agenda. We don't have anybody to complain about anything, life is groovy, and we can move on to our zoning official.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Well, and we have no ex officio to have comments from, oh, Zoning Board Liaison to Planning Commission, November 12th. Mr. Foley, you're up.
I went. I attended, well, a lot of it. They had an application, they had an application to subdivide, it's the same property we heard from a few, a few months ago, just uphill from the Starbucks, the hotel property. We had a proposal from them for a text amount regarding driveway placement. They were looking to subdivide the lower piece of that property. The planning commission found a reason to stall for another month, so they seized on that and did nothing. And then I went home.
Okay. Ms. Harris is the person of December 10th. Comments from the chair, who has nothing to say? Which everybody wants to hear, in record time, I might add.
I'm sorely dis-
Not quite new record, but close.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second it.
Sarah seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Well done.